I'll call you once and then I'll sort of mention it. Then talk to you.
Yeah, that's why I like DC is. It's totally our place.
Yeah, I mean, it's not really very much a good place to be.
Give you plenty of time.
Are you doing that?
I see you get out. You're gonna see.
Representative first.
Okay. Do you go to the zoo?
Yeah, I'm probably gonna.
Oh, good. I have a.
I can tell you right there.
Yeah. I'm into it. I'm sick of 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 it. I gotta be.
What?
If they had to ask the rest.
Yes, I'm not too bad at school at all. I was working the whole time.
There are a lot of.
It was too cold. It was only like sixteen degrees. It was only like sixteen degrees.
Water sharks above that.
I know, it's the heat waves compared to what I came from. When I got on the plane to New York.
Email your resolution.
And when I finished eating, it was like seventy-two. I was like, this is not me. It felt so good, seventy-five. Yeah.
True.
Yeah, I'm feeling about you.
Conference?
Yeah.
Oh, I think my wife's down there.
What?
I think my wife's at that conference. Or was.
Really?
Yeah, I'm Vinnie, by the way.
Vinnie, hi, nice to meet you.
Welcome to your resolution.
Yeah.
What's your wife?
Uh, well, was Katie Engdahl, now Katie Vernuchel.
Katie what?
Engdahl, now Katie Vernuchel.
Okay, yes, I know that name.
Yeah.
Yes, okay.
She was a programs director.
Programs director, okay, awesome.
Now, which one is it?
A lot more to do with it, but then even within union workers, union workers that live in New York make more than union workers that live in St. Louis.
How about the union workers that live in Missouri?
Live, make more than than union workers that live in Missouri.
What state is it that the non-union worker would make more?
Probably the states that have the higher growth, that have more, that have more job synergy in those states.
The Damos?
So, states that, you're saying states that are right to work where people make more?
I'm not saying anything. My question is pretty simple. Do you, I believe, union workers tend to make more than non-union workers? Do you not believe that?
That's your assertion.
You have no respect?
If you have data behind it, I would be happy to look at the data. I think that it has more to do with which state. So, like Michigan, people tend to make more in Detroit than they do in Springfield, Missouri.
Good.
And it's now a right-to-work state.
Does the non-union person tend to make more?
So, I would imagine that non-union workers make more money than the union workers in Springfield, Missouri.
Gentlemen, it's clear to me and to most people when you ask this question, because I didn't quite get any of these questions being asked. When I ask folks, who tends to make more, the union workers or non-union workers, emphatically, over and over, again and again, I get the answer, of course, the union workers make more. In every study ever conducted by our own common sense, we just know that to be the case. In fact, some would say that's exactly why you're closing your bills today, so that we can lower labor costs. It hasn't been every study you cited over there. The idea here is we want to lower the labor cost. In my your own testimony, I say that you could, you should go ahead and lower the labor cost so you can be more competitive, and there'll be more jobs out there. And what you said?
I think that it will bring more jobs, and it's clearly evident by other states that, that.
That's how it works, right? That's how it creates more jobs, because we have, we pay less pay.
The, the, what I'm saying is that more, that your salaries are determined by much more than union versus non-union. They're determined by the demand in the area. If you work, if you work in an industry that is in high demand, then you will, then you'll make more. If you, if you, if the industry needs to overcompensate for the cost of living changes, then they will pay more.
But we're not going after those states. What we're going after here is the right to work on the collective bargaining. That's what you're attacking right now. And you have the idea that if we just lower wages, that we can compete better, that those folks who do need to have their wages lowered should somehow get over it and, and realize that somewhere down the road, they'll actually see better pay, I guess, eventually, because the job market will return at some point, but it'll take a while.
Well, I guess, at the end of the day, an individual has, they have the ability to make an intelligent decision for themselves and what serves their best interest. And if it's in their best interest to join and pay dues to a union,
Right.
if that would increase their salary, then they will do what's in their best interest.
I'm glad you brought up so.
And so if it's not in their best interest, their individual's best interest, then they won't.
I agree a hundred percent. So, what we've learned, what average folks in the streets will tell you, that union workers tend to make more than non-union workers, that tells me that collective bargaining tends to be more effective than individual bargaining. So, why, as a state legislator, would I want to cut the wages of my folks by denying them collective bargaining to any of my workers across the state, not only within my district? Why take away the, in fact, what gives them the right to take away my most effective tool to bargain my own wages? And why would I want to?
I, I, I have a different view on it. I think that.
The question is the question.
If the workers, if the workers believe that they have the ability to negotiate better themselves.
That's not the question. So, the question is very simple. Gentlemen, if you're talking to the answer of the question you wanted, the question is, why should we take away our most effective tool to bargain my own wages? And what gives us the right to do so? Pretty straight question.
Because we should, I believe we should take the right, I think that we should take the coercive power to give it away.
Right away.
Giving it back to the individual, because what we've seen across the nation is that that has not resulted in increased wages.
It has, it has, gentlemen.
I, I would say, it is not, some of the data that is not disputable is the, is the job flight from states to right-to-work states, freedom-to-work states. There's a job flight. The jobs are moving to those states. They're not moving into Detroit, they're leaving. And so, they're, they're not, they're leaving, they're going to the states that are surrounding Missouri. We are not, we're not drawing, Missouri's manufacturing sector is declining.
Missouri's in Michigan, correct?
Correct.
And Michigan is, where's Michigan a right-to-work?
They just became a.
And folks are leaving.
They have been leaving.
Folks are leaving.
There's, there's plenty of evidence, you can go and visit and see that.
And Michigan is a right-to-work state.
They have been leaving.
I tell you that the, the statement that these, again, the RSP, I can look at countless studies by school-level universities that have far different numbers, without getting into, I, I wrap it here by saying, I noticed you guys have dramatically changed the language you're using now from what it was before. You spell right-to-work, power, and freedom-to-work. What was the reason for that change?
It's a.
The Alex thing, where Alex said, like Paul Loebman said, you know, the freedom-to-work poll's better than right-to-work? Or did Alex, some other?
I, I don't know who Alex, who this Alex person is.
Alex is a person who pretty much wrote your.
No, I, I mean, I'm sorry, because I'm sorry the comments were wrong, but no.
I was in humor you said that. Because I like these contradictory answers. You do the Alex, correct?
Yes.
Okay, very good. They wrote a lot of this language that I'm reading today on your bill, correct?
They may have.
You don't know how I got there?
I did not get it from Alex. This is language that previous legislators that I've worked with before, Representative Shuler, Senator Brown, that they have sponsored.
I would no reason to invent the real. Language that has a model that's available by the website. If I were to look at that major bill, do you think they'd look someone?
Gentlemen, I do not know, because I, I'm not, I currently do not have an account with Alex, and I don't have a way to.
This is crazy how that works. Why the coincidence?
I don't know.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll take my time. Thank you.
Thank you. I think a major premise that you come here with today and in previous proposals that are similar to what you call right-to-work, is that we're trying to encourage a free market. Is that, is that right?
I'm trying to encourage, I, I think, I'm trying to give individuals right back their, their ability to choose what's in their best interest.
So, and, and that is a free market, right?
An individual has. It's moving more towards the free market.
But what about, you know, isn't a central tenet of our free market the freedom to contract? Isn't, isn't that a constitutional right too?
Right.
And, and isn't this bill in some way impinging or eliminating that right to freedom of association and to contract?
Right.
How do you respond to that?
The, I mean, there's an interesting history about, about how this came about. And part of that is that you have individuals that would, that basically, your labor is, is what you're ready for in the negotiation. And whenever you do that, if you're, you're negotiating, and what happened for a long time is the courts ruled that, that that ability to collect it was, was considered antitrust. Because, because you, today, it, it would be considered antitrust, it would be illegal for, say, the cellphone companies, AT&amp;T, Verizon, Sprint, to collude and to negotiate together against the consumer in that negotiation.
But we've got many different types of labor. We have non-union laborers, we have union laborers. In my city, we have both, and they compete with each other. Some choose to contract and collectively bargain, and some don't. So, I don't know, under your legislation, it would make it much more difficult to collectively bargain. And it would essentially eliminate someone's right to contract. And I think that that's a central tenet of our free market system, is not, I mean, why should we chip pick one type of contract and say, you cannot enter that contract, but you, AT&amp;T, you can enter that contract with whoever.
Who's right are you referring to? Are you referring to the right of the business owner? Are you referring to the right of the individual worker? Because the individual worker's clearly has lost that right.
No, no, it's actually the collective bargaining unit that has come together, and they've voted, individuals voted, on whether to join, whether to collectively bargain.
In doing that, they have eliminated the right of, of the individuals who wish to negotiate and contract individually.
But they're the minority interests. You were elected with a majority, I presume, correct?
Right.
Should your minority in your district be able to say, you're not our representative anymore, we don't want to pay your salary?
This is the coercive power of government. You know what? We also have the ability to determine who goes to, who goes to prison for what, for what issues.
So, are legislatures coercive?
So, we have, we have, government by its very nature has the ability of coercion. And I believe that, that there's, that that ability should remain within the powers of government.
Can we do a piece of legislation that would allow people in your district not to pay your salary?
Making analogy doesn't quite fit.
I mean, wouldn't that be just as appropriate, though? I mean, it's the same analogy, is it not?
It, I, I don't think that that quite fits, quite fits, because this is, we've established, we've established within this government the, the ability, I mean, the individual contract that people have is with being a citizen of this government. And in return, we give individuals their individual rights as guaranteed under the Constitution.
I agree with you. We have a social contract.
It doesn't mean that we then cede those rights to associations that are not.
But, gentlemen, taxes are not optional. I mean, we are all benefiting from the system of our government. You're correct. And your salary is not optional. Your constitution's at the pay per, regardless of what bill you're imposed. Some of them may be happy with this bill, some may not. But should it not still be the right of this bargaining unit to be able to get reimbursed for defending their members? That's essentially what this bill's about. It's, no one is forced to join a union, they're just forced to recoup the costs if they have to, for defending them. And, and that's the same right we have under our current government system.
And gentlemen, we, I, it's a fair share argument, and I, and I think that the, the problem is that we don't provide that level of authority to any other association. And as I mentioned before, you and I work with.
Gentlemen, I'm a member of the Missouri Bar, and I have to pay my bar dues every year. And if I don't, I cannot practice law. It's, it's required. And I don't think of that as coercive. In fact, they provide me all sorts of benefits, education and otherwise, and training and skills. And no one is here proposing the right to limit the Missouri bar. Maybe that will be your next bill, so I don't want to give you an idea. I'm running in that direction. But I guess what I'm concerned about is, you know, I, I get that you're, you're a free-market idealist, and I credit you for that. And I believe that you are here in the faith of, you know, you believe in the Constitution, and you want to promote individual liberty and that sort of thing. But aren't we really just going after the individual's most sacred right in our Constitution, which is the right to bargain, to collectively come together and contract if they want, or contract individually, or choose not to contract?
Right, that's exactly what I'm saying. We, right now, we, in my opinion, we violate that. If people choose not to wish to associate with a union or choose to contract that way, we, in my opinion, we violate that by forcing them to, to.
But gentlemen, no one is forced to enter into this arrangement. They can choose not to. I mean, they don't have to go become part of the collective bargaining unit. But by virtue of your bill, we're actually eliminating that right for the people who do.
They, they, you're correct, and I, they do not have to join, but they do have to pay. And I, I don't see that there's much of a difference.
But what do we do about the folks who want to join and who want to pay?
I think we should uphold their right to join.
But, gentlemen, if taxes were optional, how many people would pay them? Do you see what I'm getting at?
Because, in my opinion, that's, I believe that what's established in the intention of the Constitution is that we, our job as legislators is to protect the rights of the individual. And what, what's happening in that situation is that we are allowing the majority to violate the rights of the individual. And I, I think that this, this is a corrective action to go back towards what I think is intended, which is to make sure that individuals retain that right.
But what will allow the individuals who want to be part of that to prevent the free rider system? Where, where someone doesn't have to join, they won't, they don't already have to join, but they don't have to even pay for the costs of the benefits that they're getting. And by eliminating the right to contract, it's essentially, you're eliminating their right to recoup their costs.
Right, the market, and market will, the market will determine how many people wish to, just like other associations. I mean, the Chamber of Commerce can't mandate that every business pays.
But you're mandating that they can't do what they want to do. And so by virtue of that, you're eliminating their right to contract, and you're eliminating their right to freedom of association.
No, what, right now, they can force others. And so we're, what I'm doing is eliminating their ability to, to force others to pay.
I appreciate the inquiry. Obviously, we're not senile, but.
We probably never will, gentlemen.
Thank you.
I heard, just in some of the other questions, I want to clarify something. Does your bill in any way restrict the ability of someone to join a collective bargaining unit?
No, it does not.
It allows them to join or not to join, it allows them to pay or not to pay for representation, is that correct?
That is absolutely correct.
You, you are not in any way preventing someone's right to contract, to join an association?
No, no, I, and I think that's, I think it's important that we, that we continue to uphold that right.
Okay, you know, we hear a lot about, as reference was made in lots of different studies, worrying about wage increases, you know, who makes more money. By Bureau of Labor Statistics in 2012, Missouri lost 51,000 union jobs. That's a lot of jobs to lose. We are still a non-right-to-work state, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, if, you know, Illinois lost 75,000. This is in '12, this is years after, we've, you know, we've gone through our recession, we're trying to come out. Everybody appreciates their economic package here. Places like Oklahoma actually had an increase of 21,000 union membership, and they are a right-to-work state. You know, there are, there are, there are a lot of information that goes both ways on it. These are statistics. Does your bill in any way restrict the ability of people to access collective bargaining? You know, if these 51,000 people wanted to stay or just to remain union, they still could, right?
Correct.
And if they want, until, but right now, if they don't want to be, what happens? If, if I'm a union member and I say, I'm fed up, and I want to negotiate for myself, what, what can I do if I work at a place that's closed?
You could, you could, the rights that, that they have today is that they could choose not to be a member.
Right.
They would still pay association fees. But they, but you would be, you would still be required to pay fees.
Why? You know, again, let's free market principle. If you have a product, if your product is a service, I'm an attorney, and I might differ on the comments on the American Bar Association as to whether we should have a bill or not on that. But if, you know, if you want, oh, I have phrases. If you want to luckily bargain, you can't. There's no, you're not preventing that. You can still, if, if I don't want to be a part of it, I still have to say, why would I pay for something I don't want? If, if the organization is good enough, if they are providing a service, as I would as an attorney, and somebody hires me, I give a service, people pay for that service. If I don't do well, people aren't going to come to me. If I, if, if I carry that into bargaining units, I carry that into, you know, union, if you have someone bargaining for you, if you're offering a service, if you're house cleaners, and, you know, if you don't do a great job, people are not going to go hire you.
And I, I think that one, I think what we saw happen with the Boeing decision is, is, is one way to look at this as well, is that, well, the reason why they were obviously looking elsewhere from Washington is their, their union was not responsive to, to the changing demands at any of our, and so the organization was willing to look elsewhere. And what was, I think, noble about what happened in Missouri is that our machinist unions were responsive. They were, they were doing everything they could to make sure that this was a fertile area for Boeing to come. Now, will, does that happen everywhere? No, but I think that what's, what was, what would be great is that, and I think they will be more responsive if they have, the individual members within the union are making sure that their union is responsive to what's in their best interest and not what's in the best interest of just the union or the union organizers.
And it's your opinion that giving this, the, the freedom-to-work right to work will make the unions more responsive to their local members?
Yes.
Is that correct?
Yes.
Thank you.
You drew an analogy between private sector unions in Missouri and public sector unions. Is that this bill would sort of shift the structure to make the private sector union organization comparable to the public sector organization?
In, in that regard, the, the individuals still have a choice in the public sector.
Right, so the two would be identical in terms of, in terms of structure. Are you aware that Missouri public employees have the lowest, or some of the lowest, not the lowest wages in the entire country of our public employees?
I, I am aware of that. And that's something that, I mean, we serve on the Budget Committee, and it's something that, that we, we deal with as a state. I think that our economy has been struggling. Part of the reason why our economy is struggling is that we don't have the taxes coming in. We're losing manufacturing jobs, we're losing other jobs to other states. We can't afford public employees.
So, you're aware that, that public employees in Missouri have some of the lowest wages in the state? And your plan is to shift the structure of the private unions to function in the same way that the.
I think that that issue is related to this, to the state funds and not necessarily, you look at the firefighter associations, the FOPs in the state, I, I know that Myron, our firefighters are very, they have, our people, people very much enjoy wanting to work in the fire department they have.
So, you think we're going to pay them more, because you think right-to-work would, we have more revenue to pay public employees? Is your argument that we don't pay them more because we don't have enough tax revenue?
I, I, I believe that the, the economy in Missouri, and we, we serve on budget together, that it's declining, and we've had to make tough decisions, and part of that is not, unfortunately, not able to increase salaries of our state workers.
You think right-to-work will increase tax revenue?
What's very clear is that the states that have passed right-to-work, that their GDP has increased, and I think that that's, we've got to grow the pot. At the end of the day, if you, if we want more money to come into the coffers, we got, we have to get more jobs here, and so.
That's, yes, what you were saying earlier. We, it's extent that we can, and, and you and I, you've actually changed my opinion on some things during your time here. To help, I don't think you're going to change my opinion today, but you have in the past.
And we can work on that together.
It's, it's always helpful if we can argue from the same set of facts, and so often, we don't. And so I'd like to try, at least at the beginning, I'm not sure what this is going to devolve into over the next few hours, but let's try it from the beginning to, to start from the same set of facts. Do we agree that the LRA, National Labor Relations Act, requires unions to represent everybody in that, in that, in that, in their bargaining unit?
What I will agree is that when a labor organization chooses to organize, they choose who they wish to represent. They, when they organize, they can choose who is going to be in that bargaining unit.
You said, who they wish to represent, you mean, you mean just the bargaining unit, or just the individual members?
They, they choose who they're going to represent. They can decide if they represent all employees or just the employees that are going to join. And so, just like last year, the FOP in Kansas City, they were making a shift to just, they wanted to make a shift to just representing the ones that are, that chose to represent, or that chose to be in their union. They were.
You have, I, again, we're sticking on the fact that, you have a private sector example of that. I, I may be wrong, but I, I, my understanding is that a, when a unit, when a unit is certified as a bargaining group, and they elect to have new representation, that that unit, that, that, that union has to bargain for everybody in that group, regardless of whether they decided to join the union or not.
If they choose that they're going to, that they can decide whether or not they're going to represent everyone. And if they choose that they're going to represent everyone, then they, then they're representing everyone.
Okay, I, I don't know, I don't, I don't believe that.
When they, they can, they can change that structure, they can, they can shift to becoming, just like the, like the.
I believe the National Labor Relations Act requires that they have to represent every single person in that bargaining unit. So, that's where, if, you, you give me this, if I'm right on that, I may be wrong, but if I'm right, I think I am. That's the difference between the local Chamber of Commerce. That's the difference between the analogies that my colleagues are using about if they do a good job as a attorney, go get business. What we're saying is that you have to do the work for them, right? So, we're saying that the union has to bargain for everybody, they have to handle grievances for everybody. And so, if they have to do that work for people anyway, it's not a matter of if I do a good job, it's required to be done. So, therefore, what, what, what Representative Manz was saying earlier is, if I know you have to represent me, why would I choose to pay union dues if I had the choice? Because you're required by law to do the work on my behalf regardless. We developed a free rider problem. Is that, where do you think that breaks down?
I, let me start it. From what, basically, what they, they determine, or they're establishing, is that they can, they can organize to only represent those members that wish to join. Or they, or they can decide, which, or they can decide, you know what, we're going to, we're going to, and they call it union security agreements. So, they can say, we want union security, that means everyone, we want to represent everyone. So, they decide that at the beginning, or they can, and I, it's clear from last year is that they can change that arrangement with a vote. So, they can choose to no longer represent everyone, but only represent those that are paid.
Okay, so our sticking point is whether the, the union is required to represent everybody in that bargaining unit? I believe that they are. I may be wrong, but I believe that they are. And you think that they don't?
No, I'm saying that it has to do with the way in which they, they organize themselves. So, if they have voted to represent everyone, and they do, but they can also, they can also organize in a different way where they don't.
I hope, I hope we can explore this later, and I think we can, I think we need to try and find the differences, because I think if we can agree on that, we have a much better chance of deciding whether these, whether this is free rider legislation or free of legislation. I, I don't think it's more.
Well, what happens, what basically what it does is it says that they, they can no longer have that security agreement. What happened in Michigan, for example, is they, a lot of the unions, when they, they went and they established that security agreement for a long-term contract, so that basically said they represent everyone during that time. So, when that contract expires, they, they basically are changed to a different type of organization.
Good inquiry.
With?
Thank you. You don't need to look like you're about to get a crick in your neck looking in one direction, so I wanted to be able to show you you can shift it around a little bit. Just so we go back, we've heard some very eloquent questions asked in one way or another. Your bill is not to get rid of unions, is that correct or incorrect?
That's correct.
All right. And then the next question I might ask would, what would be the most valuable asset any company or organization or industry would have?
Their, their workforce, their labor.
The employee. So, would you say growth brings about competition?
Absolutely.
And with competition, and to go back to what you just identified, that the employee is the most valuable asset of any business, industry, or organization itself, would they not see fit to take care of their own with competition and growth from others coming in?
Absolutely.
So, do you feel that?
The company, the company that I work for, we have, we have, outside of being the state representative, I've worked in the private sector for years, and I've, and so does the state of Missouri, 90-plus percent of the population. And they, if, if you're not pleased, then you always have an opportunity to negotiate changes and, or, or look for a different job opportunity. But I think that that's, at the end of the day, nothing is a better job security than trying, than the ability to find another job and, and, and try to better yourself as well.
So, in essence, you are adopting the free market atmosphere, is that correct?
I think that people, at the end of the day, will, will, will do what's in their best interest. And if it's in their best interest to join a union, they would, and they should. But if it's not in their best interest, and that means the union is not providing a valuable product or service, then the members will choose not to, and either the union will become better or, or the members will, will go elsewhere.
And to go back to the growth issue itself, I know this is several minutes ago. Where did you identify the growth is coming from?
Where it's, where it's, as far as jobs, the, the, the right-to-work states, or the freedom-to-work states are growing at a much faster clip. They're, I would, I would say they're accelerating. You could certainly say that there are more jobs in New York than there are in, in other parts in the Midwest. But when you look at job growth, the acceleration, how quickly they're gating jobs. Jobs are gating faster in those states than are freedom-to-work states.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ladies and gentlemen, at this time, we're going to ask all the witnesses testifying today, or those wishing to go on the record, please fill out witness forms and leave with the committee. Are there those here today in favor and opposition to the bill? What we intend to do is work from the list that we have, and we will alternate those in the room for. And with Mayor Fly, please.
Good afternoon. Mr. Chairman, members of the committee, first, thank you so much for giving me the opportunity to testify relative to this very important matter for the state of Missouri. I want to start by thanking all of you for the tremendous leadership all of you had shown and demonstrated on the Boeing special session. I was very proud of. I was very proud of the great work that this body did, Democrats and Republicans and management of labor working together to do something good for the state of Missouri. But Boeing's decision to stay in Puget Sound, it clearly shows that the labor laws were not a factor in its decision. And make no mistake about it, Missouri was in the finalists. I mean, we were finalists. They made one site visit to St. Louis, and they had two others scheduled at the time that they took the vote...the union took the vote up in Washington. They were interested in Missouri, as I talked to them directly, because we can beat well in every important factor, including workforce, productivity, ability, availability of skilled workers, transportation, closeness to markets and materials, quality of life, and proximity to quality job training. Companies have wanted to locate in places where there's skilled labor and trained workers. Growing companies need a skilled workforce, good schools, and a promise of getting projects done on time and on budget. With Boeing, Missouri's building and construction unions committed to build a project two years ahead of schedule. Don't think that could have been done in a state, not the work state...not the work state. Competitive businesses don't go to the cheapest places. They go to the best places, the places with skilled labor, quality of life, world-class universities, a good transportation system, reasonable labor and tax costs, and the availability of an abundance of affordable energy. Obviously, companies do go to right-to-work states. But they also go to our state-in-states with strong unions, as we saw with Boeing. Enacting a law to lower wages and benefit for middle-class workers was beside the point. In fact, it can have a negative effect. When Missouri middle-class families have less money to spend, small businesses, including grocery stores, restaurants, hardware stores, department stores, and the like, could suffer. Bills like House Bill 1099 distract us from the real challenges and opportunities that we have before us. We should focus on education, competitive tax policy, and infrastructure. The men and women of organized labor are not our enemies. They are our allies, as we saw very well in this Boeing effort. Boeing understands how they add value, and so do other employers. So again, thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to hear now from Mr. Jones, who very glad to work.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and committee members. Being here today and change things around, listening to these questions and answers, and how much Missourians are right to work, and for 30 years. For that, I worked for the FLCIO in Arizona. Going back to that question, does union members make more money? Yes, they do. They do make more money. But the Right-to-Work bill does not take away the collective bargaining agreement. It's still bargaining. It has nothing to do with that. The contract is still in, still there. I believe in unions, or I wouldn't have been here for many years. Started off by working for a beverage company and working my way up to organizer and business agent. But you have to understand something. Looking in California and Arizona, one mountain right to work, there was Pepsi-Cola plants in Arizona. They did make more money than Pepsi plants in California. It had to do with our bargaining, Pepsi-Cola. So there is some things that not...like that all the way. Do you have to represent non-union members in a contract of right-to-work state? Do you have to represent them? The unions have claimed they had to be forced to represent everyone in the bargaining unit, even though those units do not pay the union dues, all right? That's what you're saying. That's a false claim. Organized labor for years could not have to represent them. And this went into the NORB in 2007. The legal brief with the NORB, with the Steel Workers of America, and six other large affiliations with the FLCIO openly acknowledges that members-only bargaining has been permissible and allowed under federal law for years, decades. On the 9th of January 2008, the NORB petition filed by the entire 6 million change to win the union organization broke off the FLCIO, acknowledges the same thing with the NORB. We do not have to represent non-paying members, all right? That was a question that you would have asked. Those are the laws. You don't have to do that. I just want to go back to some of those states. You know, right-to-work isn't destroying unions at all. It doesn't destroy the union contracts. It's just allowing somebody...I look at it as being a union, and for years and years, that, being also a business agent, when the unions in a right-to-work state wanted me to do something, I better do it, or they're going to withdraw their union membership. When I was in California, when Pepsi had a problem with the grievance or anything else, I didn't want to do anything. Nothing they could do about it, because they had to pay or be fired. So I see right-to-work brings back to the members control of their own unions. The union can control itself. Now, there's going to be some talk maybe about Oklahoma, all right? Oklahoma passed this law in 2003. The last information we have is, it was said there, was January 2011. They have created 62,000 more new jobs. Their Oklahoma has reduced from 7% to 5% unemployment, lowest in the nation. The household median rose by $4,000, placing Oklahoma number one in the country for these things. All right. Now, as you guys are representatives, you have to have a rainy day savings, or you should have in this state. Oklahoma's rainy day savings went up since they passed right-to-work from $2 million to $600 million in the rainy day. Now, I've worked with representatives in Indiana, Wisconsin, and Michigan. As you know, when Wisconsin happened, the governor tried to get him out, and he won that. And in Indiana, they had problems just like we have the problems. They were going broke, they were losing businesses and also membership. In Indiana, hell, that year, 2011 and 2012, 56,000 members in union. In Michigan, they dropped 42,000 union members. And the taxes, they talked about public employees not having enough money here in Missouri because we're the lowest rate. If you don't have the taxes to pay people, how are you going to pay them? That's what happened to these states, and we're going broke. So with Indiana, this is what happened this last year in Indiana, since they passed one year of the right-to-work. They have brought in over $3 billion in new business in Indiana. That's even more now. I'm just kidding. There's 175 new deals right now that come in, not counting the old deals they had last year. But they've had Toyota announced another $150 billion expansion. Cummings is expanding $220 million. Diagnoses is expanding $300 million in Indiana. They were going to be leaving the state, and now, to proper lobby, we'll call it, they're staying in Indiana, and those tax dollars without coming, they call. You guys can believe this or not, but this is what the tax are. I'll do this quickly, there's a lot of time to take. This is my state. 30 years. 1983, I started here. There's 375 million union workers in the state of Missouri. 21% of the workforce is unionized. Last year, 2011, 275,000 union members, and this is the nearest labor department, were down to 10.9% last year. This year, 2012, we went down to 224,000 union members. Bill White mentioned that we've lost 51,000 union members. Pass the right-to-work law, let me...hire me back in as an organizer, I'll bring you back those 50,000 union members, guaranteed. Not organizing. Now, they put me on commission now. No pay, just commission. We'll bring them back. I don't know what 2013 is going to show. We're down to the lowest we've ever been, to 8.9% of the labor force, which in '53 was 35%. What are we talking about? We're going to talk about all these good things, this, this, that, that, back and forth. What's going to happen? We just going to keep going down, down, down? 224,000 union members now in the state. And yes, union members are excellent workers, no doubt about it. If anybody says wrong, they're wrong, because they're well-trained people, and they know what to do. Construction and manufacturing and everything else, they're the best workers there are, union workers. I'm bored all the way. I've had it all my life. I'm an old jarhead Marine Corps, I've been out of the service. I fought over there for freedom and liberties and freedom of choice. Missouri must pass the right-to-work law. Our people need to be able to have jobs, come back. I've been around smaller counties, up around Northern Counties, Southern Counties, Pembroke County. It looks like disaster. You guys are in there. We're going broke, small businesses and everything. If they can bring all this back, yes, the right-to-work does bring them in. I know companies right now would come in. I've worked with Indiana, all these companies we just talked about. When the right-to-work was passed, billions of dollars came back into the state. I won't be in there anymore. Back to figures, they don't do all these things anyway. I appreciate the people who talked about this in a sincere heart. Any questions on page?
Chairman, if I could first just clarify a statement that the sponsor had made on the...I apologize, I looked at my notes when you were talking before, but I recall you had made a statement concerning the Ball State study, and I thought you had said the last 10 right-to-work states who adopted right-to-work were part of the study? Was that your testimony?
They didn't...they did not...
Gotcha. So was the last one who adopted?
That had 10 years.
Gotcha. So I was looking through those, you know, to get...I guess it's in there. Oh, because it's one of 10 years. I got you. So we should go all the way back to...oh, my, I guess we'd have pushed one time. I mean, 2003, and I thought Idaho. Idaho is another state. When were they adopted? Because, but they had to be, in fact, like in the...it was decades.